Alderman, ladies and gentlemen, the most place to stand for the mayor of the town is our chairman.
Evening and thank you. To open proceedings, I would like to welcome Pastor Mike Stike from the Lutheran Church Eastside to say good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I invite you to bow your head for prayer. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you for your many and abundant blessings, for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfil our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honour of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We thank you for the gift of governing authorities which you have established to uphold and to promote peace, order and justice. Therefore we pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. Graciously grant wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time and area, concern for the well-being and needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is fitting and good, understanding, forgiveness, the ability to communicate well, and a desire to work together in harmony even where there is honest and reasoned disagreement. Grant also personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks. We pray for the agenda set before tonight's meeting. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around this Clarence municipality. It is in your most blessed name, Father, Son and Holy Spirit that we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Stike. Before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of the land of which we meet tonight, pay respects to all that's passed and present, and also remind everyone here that proceedings are being recorded, audio visually, and will be available on the council website later this week. Thank you. The meeting is open. Item one, we have an apology from Alderman Tusek. Item two, confirmation of minutes for the 7th of October, as circled, we take the ready to firm. Thank you Alderman Pierce, Second Alderman Chong, all those in favour. There is nothing to record at item three. Item four, that council notes the workshops for 24th, 31st of October and the agenda brief for fall November. Alderman Pierce, thank you, Second Alderman Von Berto, all those in favour. There is unanimously. Item five, declarations of interest of Alderman or close associate. Are there any? Six is tabing of petitions, there are none on the agenda, are there any petitions from the board? General Manager.
Mr Mayor, it's not a new petition, but we have some additional signatures to the petition that was tabled at last council meeting. We have, with the consent of the person lodging, the petition has agreed that we'll just annex it to the earlier version of the petition that was tabled at that last council meeting. Sorry, this was in relation to additional seven signatories objecting to the development application at 19 Beach Street.
Thanks General Manager. Item seven, public question time, there are no matters on notice, are there any questions from members of the public who are asked? Thank you. Item eight, deputations by members of the public, General Manager.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Our first speaker this evening is Mr Jeff Allen, who wishes to address council in relation to the proposed development of 19 Beach Street to become board floors.
I do need to remind speakers that under meeting wrecks, we can only provide a three-minute window, and there'll be a little sound to warn you of two and a half minutes. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor, Deputy Mayor Alderman and council staff. I speak for many surrounding residents with 59 signing a petition against the development. I wish to point out to you some, in this limited time but not all, of the many reasons for refusal. Firstly, private outdoor space. These three-bedroom units intended for families have no private outdoor space directly accessible from a habitable room, but are provided with a small upper deck set two metres off the boundary fence. At least three decks overlook the privacy of each of our Beach Street houses. Although a 1.7 metre screen is added to vaguely overcome this, the northern edge of each deck is of clear glass destroying any privacy. This 1.7 metre screen will significantly impact on the little sun new residents may receive. Reality, missing from the shadow diagrams is a 10 metre tall blackwood tree, which will take nearly all afternoon sun for both units five and six. This tree's to-be-locked canopy will be just two metres away from the deck of unit six. Reality, at unit four, their deck and living area is situated two metres off a frequently-used chimney fluke, how unpleasant would that be? Why not orientate the decks north? Well, the developer has only a setback for unit six of one and a half metres on the northern boundary, and the remaining units are too close to do likewise. This setback for unit six is argued as a discretion because just one place on South Street has a smaller setback. Much overshadowing of habitable rooms for units two to five is brought about by the proximity of the units to each other, but for unit five, reality, the tree's shadow will cause it to be in permanent shade. The setback of unit two is just three metres off South Street, hardly sufficient to attenuate traffic noise as intended, but the developer has claimed primary frontage as that of the existing unit one. By using a simple metric of land area divided by number of units, this plan provides a delusion of adequate space. However, if the title is split, as rumours suggest it will be, with unit one on one title and units two to six on a separate title, the land area for the five new units is only sufficient for four. Neighborhood conflict is inevitable. Unit residents, if they try to remove or reduce the 1.7 metre screen, will need a development application. Trees, chimneys, both of which magically disappear under the rules of the planning scheme, lack of privacy and noise due to the unreasonable proximity, will all cause friction. One cannot convert the quality of privacy to a mere linear measurement and ignore context. Reality, this plan creates a disturbing outcome of living in goldfish bowls for its neighbours and smoke-polluted darkened battery hen cages for its new residents. This plan fails to meet many acceptable solutions and too frequently resorts to subjective performance criteria. The sheer number of minor discretions in totality are reason sufficient to warrant refusal. I urge Alderman to reject this development. I would also like the Alderman to accept this confidential letter to the General Manager in relation to the development.
Next speaker, Mr Mayor, is Mr I W Gowdy, who wishes to address council in respect of the same matter.
I would like to just talk about the skate park, the sports building and the foreshore at Bell Reed, which you've just recently been developing. Now, this is magnificent. This is quality development. I had an art master in my school in England, and he used to go on about policy town planning, and that is classic town planning, classic good quality development. I come to this development of 19 Beach Street, which is actually, as far as I'm concerned, of number two South Street, because I live at number four South Street. This development is not a policy development like that, as I was talking about. It pushes the boundaries, it pushes identity, it requires exemptions within itself because it is pushing the limits of what's acceptable. We live, I think many people now in the developed world know that we live in a post-democratic society. This is where the processes do not serve the people, it's only the rich people who benefit. And this is a very common theme, we all know that it's happening all around the world. And what we see here is 59 people are objecting to this development. I'm just one of them. The developers could have looked at it grand, they could have said, we've got three of them, a single story, and we would have come to look at the plan, and we would have said, wow, that's cool man, that's good, you know, really good, we like it. Instead of which, we've got five double-story battery hen cages. It's just not quality at all. I ask you, Mr Mayor, would you like five townhouses next to you, or any of the council people, would you like the development of five double-story townhouses looking into your front window? And I come to detail, on page 92 of the report about the overshadowing of number four South Street, which is where I live, it says, four Beach Street, in other words, the planning department has got it wrong, they've got the wrong address, is not overshadowed till 2pm. Well, by looking at the sun shadows, you can clearly see that the sun doesn't get to my front window until 1pm. So that means I get one hour of sun in the winter, from 1 till 2, and then the development will overshadow me. Now, no doubt there's a rule, they're only allowed to take away three hours of my sun, but I only get four, so I'm losing all the sun in my front window. Also, if I look up, there'll be three bedrooms looking directly into my front window. I ask you to reject this proposal and basically perform the function of the democratic council. Thank you.
And no further speakers, Mr Mayor. Item nine, there are no motions on notice. Item 10, reports from outside bodies, single and joint authorities, Sun Tasmanian Council's authorities. As reported previously, the CEO of STCA has moved on to other employment in Victoria, and the STCA board is currently reviewing its operations objectives, and will be considering a formal report on the future of STCA and how it operates. In other words, whether it needs a full-time CEO or part-time CEO, and I'll certainly keep the council up to date on that. I will table a actions arising briefing note that came out of a workshop held by the board members on that. Happy to take any questions once you've had a chance to, with that of course. The quarterly report is pending, and I guess it remains at some risk while there is no CEO for the joint authority. Copying refuse disposals by joint authority, Alderman Ken. Unwise strategy authority, Alderman James.
Mr Mayor, the report is pending, and as soon as it's available, I'll table it for council.
And regarding the Tasmanian Water Corporation, I can advise that the AGM is held this Thursday in Launceston, and there'll be a report coming from that at the next council meeting. Moving on to 10.2, reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies. We have a report there from the NRM committee, quarterly report, the chairperson's report very received, thank you, Gordon McFarlane. Second up, I'll take Alderman Von Berto, there's any discussion on that report. Okay, so I put the motion, all those in favour. Go unanimously, are there any other reports? 11, it's reports of offices. 11.1, the information in the weekly briefing reports for the 17th, 24th and 31st of October will be noted. Thank Gordon McFarlane, Second Alderman Chong, any discussion on the weekly briefing reports? Alderman McFarlane?
In relation to the briefing reports issued for October 2016, and the tribunal decision of 67 Malamara, I just note that in the original report given to council, there was support for this development. It went to mediation, and again it was brought back to Carrot Hill to support for mediation, and that the tribunal still refused it on the grounds that they believed the case was there for overshadowing. So I'm pleased to see that people in the community are starting to represent their points of view and follow through at the tribunal.
Speakers in regard to the weekly briefing reports. In that case, I put the motion, they'll be received, all those in favour. Go unanimously, be noticed. 7.2, one, termination of petitions tabled at previous council meetings, in particular petition regarding 19 Beach Street, I guess, including the addition for the tabing tonight. Thank you, Gordon McFarlane, Second Alderman Pierce, all those in favour. Go unanimously. 11.2.2, is a petition for Clarence Street Safety Assessment. Alderman James, I think it was this, I can only recall as I saw it.
I move the officer's recommendation on page 20, that council notes the intent of petition, that the petitioners be advised that council will consider the matters raised in the petition, along with any of the other issues resulting from the review of the operation of Clarence Street after the completion of the current safety works and their operations for a year.
Second up, please. Alderman Berto, thank you. Alderman James.
Mr Mayor, at a prior council meeting, we did set in frame a process, and that was as per the officer's recommendation. So let's let that run its course, and then at the end of that timeframe, reconsider, if we need to, any of those matters that were raised in those original, I think, nine dot points that were considered at the time. So I'm suggesting that we wait, let it run its course as per the decision that we made prior, and then at that time, we can then consider the other alternatives. I see councillors.
Mr Alderman Berto?
I am just referring to Mr Mayor, the previous decision of this council, and assuming that that's going to be followed through.
Thank you. Alderman Von Berto?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, today, I actually emailed an alternative motion, which I wish to foreshadow, if this particular motion is not successful. I've also actually circulated a hard copy to all of the Alderman tonight. As I've noted in the alternative motion, this has had a long history. The safety of Clarence Street for all users has actually been an ongoing consideration for council for a number of years. The 2007 and 2013 Bicycle Action Plan Iteration, both endorsed by council, identified Clarence Street as a key commuter cyclist route, requiring safety improvements for cyclists. The Hobart Regional Arterial Bicycle Network Plan 2009, also endorsed by council, identifies Clarence Street as a major arterial route for commuter cyclists. The SKM report, Sinclair, Knight and Mertz, was completed in 2011 and looked at the Clarence Street Safety Assessment. And one of the recommendations was to improve the definition of lateral road space, perhaps by actually providing edge lines on both sides of the traffic lane. And to date, none of those recommendations have been implemented by council. Council and state government have actually expended considerable resources in relation to this project, in both staff time and consultant fee up to this point. On the 7th of December 2015, council actually looked at this issue, and I want you to note that in the officer's report, the purpose of the item at the beginning of the agenda report was stated as to seek council's approval to undertake public consultation on design options for improving safety for all users of Clarence Street. And this officer's report, which included specific recommendation to undertake community consultation on design options one and three, and an Alderman's workshop, to look at the results, actually followed two workshops where this was considered very carefully by the Alderman, and the officers were actually bringing to council what they believed the Alderman had looked at at the workshop. The petition is from a considerable number of people, members of the public, and many of those are Clarence residents, and more specifically, Harren Bell Reed residents. I think it's really important to note that 22 of the petitioners are actually metro bus divers, who believe that if there were bike lanes, it would make Clarence Street much safer, and they actually believe that Sandy Bay Road, because of the bike lanes that have been put in there, is a much safer place, and it reduces their stress level in relation to bikes on that particular road. I also believe that council has an obligation to this very large body of petitioners and to the whole community to undertake consultation. We actually have a community participation policy, and I've noted in that alternative motion the purpose and objectives. And I won't go into the objectives, but the purpose of the community participation policy is to involve the community in decision-making and improve understanding between council and the Clarence community. I've spoken with the group manager of asset management, and my understanding from those discussions is that the completion of the detailed designs for the infrastructure upgrades approved at the 7th of December council meeting last year, and also budgeted in the 2016/17 annual plan, the actual specific designs are not expected until March 2017, and the completion of the first stage of the change is not anticipated till partway through 2017/18. As far as I'm concerned, a period of approximately two years, as is suggested by the officer's recommendation, is far too long to wait for council to consider public consultation. So with that, I actually believe that what we are looking at is public consultation that is required, is an obligation as far as council is concerned, policy-wise and morally-wise, to actually look at this matter. It's about public consultation. When we actually get the results and finalise the process, then we can actually look at the whole with that last piece of a jigsaw.
Next speaker is Gordon McFarlane.
I don't support the motion generally, Mr Mayor, in the context that council spent a reasonable amount of money in a process which included a collaborative reference group. At no time did the reference group actually make any decisions, they just forwarded options to the council for consideration. This motion we are talking to at the moment, actually, the option we're talking to is the do-nothing one really. The other two, the options read were safety improvements retaining existing parking conditions, option two, clearway zones, shared parking and bike facilities including safety improvement, option three, safety improvements with bike lanes on both sides and modified on-street parking. As Alderman Von Berto has stated, this has been an ongoing discussion for a long time, and the motion before us is the do-nothing motion. I think we owe the community the right to have a say on this. This is an ongoing discussion in the community on risk and safety, and for us to go with the report on the table, I think, is undermining the future of health and well-being policies that we have in place, people's choice within the community for alternative transport, and really, it takes us back to the dark ages, quite frankly, to do nothing. It's time we took this out for consultation, not just allow it to sit there as yet another report we've done nothing about.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm going to indicate my intention to vote against the motion that's on the table and support the foreshadow motion if it has the opportunity to come up. Having said that, I actually think a better approach for Alderman Von Berto would have been to move her motion right now as an amendment to the current motion, but we'll see what happens. Bike lanes, I think Clarence Street is a very logical place for bike lanes. Now, what we're talking about is a safety assessment, and as Alderman McFarlane and Alderman Von Berto have both pointed out, bike lanes are actually a safety feature. It's something that improves the safety for users of the road who are cyclists. Now, we understand that there is a multi-user pathway along the foreshore, but there have been complaints that cyclists are travelling at great speed along there because they're commuter cyclists. Clarence Street lends itself a lot better to commuter cyclists, provided that their safety is provided for, rather than a multi-user pathway, which is really a provision for recreational cyclists. It's a relatively cheap thing to do, I think it makes sense, and what I haven't heard so far through not just the debate today, but the debate we've had previously about the Clarence Street Safety Assessment and in the workshops, is what would be the problem with having bike lanes? Other than the very small cost, what would be the dis-benefit to other users of the road? I haven't, I honestly haven't heard an argument advanced to that effect. As far as I'm concerned, this makes sense, and I don't see the point in holding it off for another year.
Other speakers? Alderman Pierce?
Look, if Alderman Von Berto's right, and we're waiting so long after this council has already approved Clarence Safety Works and all for safety, and then that work's not going to be done, if I'm correct, it finished 2018, and then we're going to wait another year, is that right? Is that true?
Or leave that to the writer reply, and take that as a rhetorical question?
Because to me, that seems ridiculous. I mean, we did say we'd budgeted for safety works to be done at Clarence Street, and I think they must be done, but then, if they're not going to be done for 2018, then we're going to wait another year. I've got to admit, I agree with Alderman Von Berto, I think it's a bit ridiculous. I would certainly hope, and I can't see any reason why these safety aspects cannot be hurried up, because I believe they're very important, I believe Clarence Street for cyclists and motorists, especially the part from the top of, we'll say, the Yoncote, the corner where Clarence High School is, that is very narrow, from Clarence High School onwards, further down to here, and that's not so bad, but it's a very tight fit there. And I thought we were going to do safety works to improve the safety of cyclists, but why it's taken so long, I'll just never know, and I think that is ridiculous.
Thank you Alderman Pierce, Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Whilst I'm not quite convinced the safety improvements are not quite the do-nothing option, they're certainly the not-do-enough option, I think, for me. We've spent a long time in various workshops talking about public transportation and the congestion, and all of these kind of things, and cyclists, people say commuter cyclists in particular, are a great way to get rid of some of that congestion. I think we have the capacity in Clarence Street to make a really excellent commuter cycle way. It's a good road, it has a good transport feed into it, a lot of people come down that way into town. Yes, there is the multi-use cycle path, but I've cycled along there, and I know a number of people do complain about the speed that everybody goes along there, and if you're commuter cycling, you don't go 10 kilometres an hour, you go a lot faster than that. And I think it would be great to take this consultation and actually come up with a really good long-term solution for Clarence Street and for cyclists.
Other speakers?
I think you're second on the motion.
All right, writer reply, Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The question arises here as to what happened... The question arises here as to what happened on the seventh of December 2015, and at that meeting, council considered the report from the technical working group, and set in train those numbers of safety matters that needed to be done, including the bus stops, and also provide discreet turning lanes, and rationalise the frequency and location of standouts and violence. And on page twenty-three of the report, the annual plan for 2016-17 has allocated 295,000 for those works to be done. So we have made a decision on the seventh of December 2015 to do that, and at that time, it wasn't decided to implement or install bike lanes there until we had undertaken the safety matters, because they were of a higher priority than going ahead and putting in bike lanes and doing this other work until we had established the safety matters on that particular street. So what we are faced with here is to go ahead and implement what the seventh of December decision of council was, and that was to undertake those safety matters, and the funds are available in 2016-17, and the motion that's before the chair is in fact that the petitioners be advised that council will consider the matters raised in the petition, along with those other issues, once those matters of safety have been dealt with and have been concluded. So we don't want to rush into this because of the safety implications, and also too, to make sure that we do it right. Then we'll come back, and I'm sure that once we have the safety matters in place, Mr Mayor, then we can go ahead and consider what needs to be done in the way of any bike lanes, and I'm sure that if we do that properly and undertake the safety matters first, then in fact, we can come back and say, look, we've kicked off on that particular matters, or those matters, and then we can go to the next stage. I see council support.
So the motion before the chair is the officer's recommendation. All those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. Alderman Von Berto.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't think I need to go into any more detail than what I've gone into, except to say and to stress that on the seventh of December 2015, the actual officer recommendation before us at that time actually had a C and D that we consult with the community, and C and D were actually taken out when the motion was put. So at that-
I copied that on the original, thank you.
Get it started.
Sorry to interrupt, please continue, Alderman Von Berto.
So I want to stress that we had a number of workshops, but we had two very close to that council meeting, and the officers took away from that what they put forward as far as the recommendation. The recommendations that were safe for public consultation, C and D, were actually taken out when the motion was put, and the majority of Aldermen at that time actually agreed with the motion that was put. I believe that it is beholden on us as a council to actually undertake public consultation, as I said, due to our community participation policy and also morally. And so, I would like for, for instance, Mr Caditas, who is here today in the gallery, who actually was a member of the collaborative reference group, I would like for our bicycle committee, I would like for Bike Network Tasmania, who have actually put this petition together, I would like for them to actually be able to go out into the community and say that Clarence City Council has actually completed the process by having public consultation in relation to this matter. When it comes back to us, the public consultation, then we can actually look at it in light of everything else that we have, and make a determination as to what we do from there. Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman Von Berto. Alderman here.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Alderman James, in his writer reply on the previous motion, said that it's important that we deal with the safety features of Clarence Street first. This is a safety initiative, it's about providing for the safety of cyclists, and cycle lanes are something that can be very easily, given the width of Clarence Street and given that, you know, some of the design works already have been done, can be very easily incorporated into the design.
Other speakers? Alderman Walker.
Look, to be very clear, and you wouldn't necessarily know if you'd just walked into the chamber tonight, or a minute ago, this is not a motion right before us now as to whether we're going to put some honking big yellow lines down the side of Clarence Street tomorrow, and it's going to be a cycling, you know, cycling superhighway. This is about tidying up the loose ends of a consultation process that wasn't completed. Where that will lead us, may end up with a cycle lane, may not. This is just completing what we endeavoured to set out to do in the first place.
Speakers? Alderman James.
The motion that's before the chair is interesting inasmuch as that it authorises the general manager to undertake in February 17 a broad consultation programme based on the technical working group's design options one and three. So in other words, one and three deals with the safety matters, but three more importantly brings the bike lanes right back into the mix. And so we are now moving away from what we had decided on the seventh of December, to actually bring in bike lanes as part of the consultation process. So obviously, the consultation process will engender a response which, I believe primarily, will be dedicated, if you want to use that term, to bike lanes on Clarence Street. So we are moving the goalposts from our decision of the seventh of December to now include the bike lanes in the actual discussion and the consultation process. And so when we have the Alderman's workshop in March or April to consider the results of the public consultation, we will be faced with, I believe, overwhelming support for bike lanes to be implemented and installed or provided for in Clarence Street, and there's no room to manoeuvre in that regard because of option one and three being included in the consultation process, and therefore our hands are tied, and therefore we would have to run with bike lanes before those other safety matters and turning blades, et cetera, are installed in Clarence Street. So it's just changing the whole process of what we had intended, to look at safety first and foremost, review that process, and then obviously consider how it would fit within that sort of layout of bike lanes within Clarence Street. It's a great motion, this one, because it's going to basically lock us in to option three, and then basically I would have thought that, given it's right in the mix of budget time, 2017-18, that we would have to budget for bike lanes in Clarence Street, and that may come before what we had decided as safety measures for the people and the bus drivers and everything else that was decided on a safety grounds, and that may be pushed to one side, and bike lanes put in, and therefore we have this problem, I believe, of not looking at the safety matters first, but providing bike lanes in Clarence Street when we haven't done our homework, we haven't had the safety design and all those other matters in place, and I can see it could be a recipe for disaster.
Other speakers? Alderman Sterling.
Mr Mayor, could I ask what the actual costing was against option three? I can't recall. Does anyone recall what that costing was?
Agreed, Mr Mayor, we'd have to take that on notice, or maybe dissipating that question on the pro.
Well, I was just looking at this because I know that at the council meeting, that we actually decided to allocate 295,000 for a purpose, and that's how I understood it to be, so I can't envisage what the difference in costing is for going for option three, and I imagined that that was some sort of consideration in the whole staging of the improvements for Clarence Street. I also speak on behalf of residents who live along Clarence Street. I know that when I spoke to this motion before, I actually understand the plight of people who already live on Clarence Street, who will then undergo parking restrictions and a change, a total change to what they're accustomed to. So despite the fact that we are all pushing, or the society today is pushing for bikes, we've also got to consider current users of that road from all capacities, not just those that actually ride on the road surface. There's a number of people that live adjacent to that, that enjoy a certain lifestyle and aren't accustomed to having restrictions or being unable to park on either side of Clarence Street, which option three will obviously involve. And the reason I stand here is because I'm a little confused, because I thought we'd made a decision, now because we've received a petition, there's suddenly a change, and I just wonder, with the merits of that.
Thank you. Alderman McFarlane.
This is requested for consultation. At this point in time, the options are there, one and three. I think that this is a very fair outcome, considering the work that was done at the workshop, and that we should be following up on our well-financed and time-consuming project that we've done by following it up with consultation. What comes out of it for me in the past, option one, from what I vaguely remember, because I'm not good on technicality, but option one would have done the groundwork that we needed to put the bike lanes in anyway. So technically speaking, option one will happen regardless, and option three is a follow-up. So whether we do it now or later, option one will always happen, because that was the risk assessment that needed to be done to implement bike lanes anyway.
Other speakers? Writer reply, Alderman Von Berto.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to reiterate that this motion actually focuses on community consultation, something that I know all of the Aldermen hold very dear, and that's actually enshrined in council policy on this particular occasion. Also, let's see what comes out of the public consultation. It's the whole public, not only bike users. Yes, we had a collaborative reference group, and we used a very innovative community involvement, but that is not the same as broad public consultation, which we always use for strategic matters. So I actually commend this motion to the Aldermen.
Thank you. So the motion before the chair is the one circulated by Alderman Von Berto. All those in favour? Against? Carried. Now advised that council intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approval Act of 1993. Item 11.3.1 is a development application at 44 Bingley Street, Harrow, for five multiple dwellings. Alderman Campbell, second, Alderman Piers. Speakers?
This is a big site, it's four thousand or four hundred square metres, and it's next to a highway side, and no worries in supporting the recommendation.
Other speakers? The writer reply required. All those in favour? Against? 11.3.2 is a development application at 217 Blyth Street, Rosney Park, for a change of use to Dance Studio. Alderman, thank you, Walker. Seconder, Alderman Piers. Speakers?
Yes, Mr Mayor, it's a fairly straightforward change of use situation, and once I've moved this motion and successfully passes, as the activity goes fork in that centre, that'll be much more elegant than the movement that I can achieve, so we should all-
You want to top that, Alderman Piers? Any other speakers? I've put the motion then the officer's recommendation for approval with conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.3, development application at 19 Beach Street, Bel Reve, for six multiple dwellings. Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have circulated a motion with respect to DA at 19-
Do we have a seconder, please? Alderman McFarlane, I think, was first capful, correct? Thank you, Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, a lot was said earlier this evening with regard to the couple presenters at this place, and I think in a nutshell, the density and the bulk of this development and the impact upon the neighbouring properties should be, I believe, foremost in our minds in relation to the proposal. So this application that's before the chair is for the application to be refused for the following reasons. The proposal is contrary to clause 10.4.2 acceptable solution, three of the Clarence Planning Scheme 15, in respect of the setback from unit six now in the northern boundary. There is an unacceptable visual impact that's going to be caused by this, because of the scale, bulk and proportions of unit six in respect of the neighbouring dwellings. The proposal is contrary to clause 10.4.3 acceptable solutions two, as units three, four, five and six do not admit the minimum dimensions for private open space or accessibility requirements from a habitable room for units two, three, four, five and six. In actual fact, you have to go upstairs and through the actual upper area living to come out onto the balcony to actually be able to utilise the public open space as part of what the acceptable solutions requires, and in this case does not permit. And therefore it will impact upon the overall privacy of surrounding residents in Beet Street, and there is a number of those residents that will be affected by this because of the nature of the close proximity to the balconies, and also the setback from the boundaries of those properties in Beet Street. Thirdly, the proposal is contrary to clause 10.4.2 acceptable solutions of the planning scheme, in respect of overshadowing of the buildings on the same site. The proposal fails to meet the performance criteria as it provides insufficient sunlight to north-facing habitable rooms of two, three, four and five. In actual fact, there has been mentioned tonight, Mr Mayor, of a tree. Now, the tree is on the neighbour's property, there is some, obviously some overhanging, and there has to be some removal, it would appear, of some branches, but the sunlight will be obviously limited to that particular unit because of the nature and the close proximity of that tree to that particular unit. So the reasons for council, and hopefully for council to make the decision, is the proposal represents an overdevelopment of the site and would result in unreasonable impacts on the use, amenity and enjoyment of the surrounding land, as well as the future occupants of the proposed units. I think it was said tonight, Mr Mayor, quite clearly, that a number of the people who have actually signed the petition, were actually, the two members of the public who spoke this evening, they're not opposed to development, but in this particular case, it is impacting upon the lifestyle, residential and amenity of the adjoining properties, and I think that this particular development is to actually squeeze in as much development as possible, and therefore the impact on the neighbouring properties is being obviously impacted upon, and therefore I believe we should refuse this particular application. impacted upon, and therefore I believe we should refuse this particular application, and I seek council support.
As with a number of development applications that come before us, it is not within our power to put conditions that substantially change a development application. And when it comes to our discretion, we are also limited in how much change we can promote. Consequently, that leaves us with refusal. Refusal leads to either mediation at the tribunal, or a tribunal decision if it goes that far, or for the developer to completely revamp the application and resubmit it to address the concerns. I believe there are enough concerns here put forward very well by the community into what those problems are from their point of view, but from looking at the plans, I believe that there has been a number of discretion put forward, which I can't support and therefore support a refusal.
Yes.
I'm just trying to look at this, and I think, you know, I've been hearing what people have been saying, I went down and had a look, and I'm familiar with the area, and I think they're using their good space for this sort of development. I think it's too much, too prescient of development. And one of the speakers tonight said, the neighbours be living in a goldfish bath, and I went down and had a look, and I was fully a resident. I mean, I'm one of the, one of the existing residents and having this intrusion, my amenity and privacy and that. And it's regarding density and bulk versus space, I think it's just too, too dense thing for that area, and I think it's out of sync with the rest of the community.
Firstly, a question through to, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Lovell. Just trying to get my head around the, the fencing heights that will be backing onto this property now with the development. I think it's a one point eight metre fence on the boundaries, is that correct? Or is it one point seven?
It's one point seven.
One point eight. And the, the, a permitted height, what would be the highest permissible height of a fence before having to be resubmitted as part of a different planning application?
Two point one.
Two point one. So a, a, as far as a, as a tool of amelioration, there might be thirty centimetres in a fence, but that would be as, as high as it could go without a, a resubmitted application. Yep. Okay. This, this is something that I've been giving a lot of consideration to, this applicant, this girl application, and it's been, been a couple of meetings since one sort of occupied quite this amount of headspace. People talk about the good old days, and some people would suggest Clarence Planning Scheme two thousand and seven is, is looking like the good old days. There was a bit of certainty around some things. This wouldn't have been before us under that scheme. It is here, and this is the brave new world of the Clarence interim, you know, interim, another word for interim is limbo, but the, the planning scheme with which we've got at the moment, a scheme we haven't been using for an awful long time, and I would suggest a scheme whose norms and whose some of the definitions haven't totally been established through the appeal mechanisms when, when things are rejected. I know that this site is ripe for urban renewal, and that would mean more properties on there than is now. And that is something that is quite beneficial in many ways, given the topography of the land, the, the positioning there amenities. However, how this has come before us, and some of the discretion is required, not so much the multiple, because that can go there, but, and some of the new norms around those haven't totally been made clear. I don't have a level of comfort to, to, to pass it as it currently stands. If it does get refused, I, I hope that with goodwill and spirit, a mediation process is into, into, you know, in a, in a fairly quick timeframe, and that, that something's worked out. That there may be things, as Alderman McFarlane said, with conditions that we can't out here that could be sorted through that process. So this is not an easy decision for me, but I hope in, in a very elegant way, I've explained how I've come to it.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think Alderman, Alderman Walker's done pretty well.
Well, I would have a look, like many other Aldermen, this. And when I read the report, and I do think that the residents that I spoke to and they showed me their properties, and I've got to admit, I do feel a bit like on the desk, I think things are crammed in. And when I look at the, and normally I'd say, yes, the office's report's good performance criteria, I'd sort of accept that, acceptable solutions. But in this case, I cannot accept a lot of those, because as Alderman James said, ten point four two, ten point four three, the ten point, ten point four four, I believe, is the overshadowing issue. And I really had some, some doubt. I, I think the balconies on these units really probably just the overriding factor. I don't think I'd like people looking right in the back of my property, which will obviously occur. A bit like Alderman Walker, and I spoke to one of the neighbours, and I said, well, you're pretty sure that something will go there, and they're not empty, something going there, just don't like what's going there at the moment. I totally agree. I, I don't like what's going there. So I hope we've some mediation, some discussion, we'll get something that's a bit more realistic. I really believe there's too many here. I believe that we've crammed in so much, it just doesn't really suit the area and this whole lead.
Here's Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, as Alderman Walker and Alderman Pierce have said, I mean, this site is absolutely ripe for development, perfect site, but like others, I think the overshadowing is, is a major problem. It, the access to sunlight is an issue that we wrestle with often, and it's, it's something that we look at and we make comments about all, all the time. And it seems foolish, perhaps, to agree to a, to a proposal that actually overshadows everything as you go along the area. I, I just can't see how we can agree to that, that goes against a lot of the things that we've done in this chamber previously. So I will be supporting the alternative motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like, like Alderman Walker, I've been really grappling with this, this application and agonising over it, and, you know, trying to, trying to run it through the, the filter of the acceptable solutions and performance criteria. A couple of the, the points in Alderman James's alternative motion are possibly arguable. But the thing is, if it fails any acceptable solutions, it then only needs to fail one performance criterion, I, I think, to, you know, to give us the means for refusal. And in my case, I, I do accept point one of, of Alderman James's motion, in that it does cause a, a visual impact by the apparent scale and bulk of the development. And on, and on that basis, and I'm very loathe usually, given the, the excellent job that our planning staff do to go against an office's recommendation, I, I usually, I always think very carefully before I do so, because, because I do honestly think that they do an excellent job. But there, there are in this planning scheme some, some performance criteria that can be subjectively interpreted, can be interpreted in different ways. And I think, you know, we, we, we don't have, or we probably need more, more direction from the decisions set down by the tribunal before we understand how some of these clauses are really going to be interpreted by them. And that's, and that's what we're doing, you know, with, with any planning application and trying to assess it, is trying to second guess which way the tribunal would go and how they would interpret the scheme. So, you know, I, I can, I can appreciate the residents' concerns. Having said that, we need to, we need to look at that, this through the filter of the planning scheme, the eyes of the planning scheme, but I do believe that the proposal fails compliance with the scheme just on that performance criteria three in ten four two. I would ask if Alderman James would be willing to accept a small typo to his motion to refer to ten four four in point three.
Seconder, happy with that? Alderman McFarlane, are you happy with that? Thank you, will we incorporate that? Other speakers? Alderman Turner.
Mr. Mayor, I too have thoroughly read the report, and I'm familiar, very familiar with the site. I'm also aware that in South Street, there are a number of unit developments, and there are a number of buildings, and they are a mass block. They're not individual sites, but they're mass blocks. And no doubt, when they were being constructed, if you happened to live next door to them, you wouldn't have been too happy either. The unfortunate thing with the planning scheme is there's a lot about it we don't like. That's the reality. Now, in Hobart City Council, most of the councils are grappling with some items that are in the planning scheme. It is not, the duty for us is to actually assess it based on the planning scheme and based on the fact that if we refused it and it went further, that we are not wasting public funds defending that decision. So that's where my concern comes from. As I said, South Street is, is quite prolific unit development in that area. There's quite large blocks of units. This is a double-storey development of individuals, and it's, it's a development that we're going to see more and more of. And the reality is that with medium-density housing in suburbs where public transport is already well-established, this is the sort of developments that are going to be on the increase, because we, if we keep pushing developments further and further out, we put too much pressure on infrastructure. So they're my considerations, and they're what I'm grappling with, but I've also listened to all of the concerns, and I understand that it wouldn't take too much to actually make this development work. And I think that's the benefit of the public outcry, is to actually say, we don't, we do like development, but isn't pushing it a little too far. I'm the final speaker.
You are. Deputy Mayor hasn't spoken.
Oh, right. I'm the penultimate. I think it's important to note that the acceptable solutions in relation to privacy, density and parking are actually met. And what we seem to be in furthest agreement about is primarily overshadowing. And to many of us who've been here, some have been here a very long time compared to me, but I know over the nine years that I've been here, we've been concerned time and again about overshadowing and solar passing. And as Alderman McFarlane noted, the number of aspects which don't actually meet the acceptable solution, and therefore we need to look at the performance criteria in relation to particularly overshadowing, mean that for me, I feel uncomfortable about this development. I hope that if it is actually refused tonight, it can be dealt with at mediation. If it can't, then I think it is, as I think Alderman Walker and perhaps Alderman James actually said, it's actually refining and testing our understanding of this interim planning scheme and what other boundaries, if you like. So I can't actually support the office's recommendation on this particular area.
Right of reply, Alderman James. Thank you. The motion before the chair is a refusal. All those in favour? Against? Item eleven point three point four is a development application at Seven Malita Court, Gilson Bay, for two multiple dwellings. Thank you, Alderman McFarlane, second. Thank you, Alderman Chong. Alderman McFarlane, would you like to speak to it?
I just that I support the office's recommendation.
Other speakers? Motion then for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point five is a development application at eleven Runway Place Cambridge.
If I may, just remind Alderman that the objection has actually been withdrawn in respect of that eleven three five last decision.
Berke Alderman Campbell, Second Alderman Pierce. Case put the motion for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you. And that concludes our business as a planning authority. There's nothing at customer service, asset management or financial management. Eleven point seven is governance. Eleven point seven point one, that the quarterly report to the thirty-third September be received. Alderman Campbell, Second of Alderman McFarlane. A discussion on the quarterly report. Alderman James.
I refer to pages fourteen and fifteen, and it's, it's referring to grading of unsealed roads occurred, occurred in the following areas. And I note that Vishano Street, Pipe Place, Barnard and Musk Road areas have been listed there. But, Mr. Stevens isn't here, is he? I've just realised that. He was a minute ago.
I thought he was. I think he saw you standing up.
Yeah, look, perhaps the GM may be able to be the fallback person on this, so good. He usually has a handle on most things, so. So just on Vishano Street, and, and the upgrading, is there any proposal to do any works on that road as far as following the decision on the Clifton Beach, you know, that application for rezoning? It was identified as part and parcel of some works to be undertaken, and so I'm just wondering as to whether or not there is proposal to do any major upgrade as distinct from the unsealed nature.
Free, Mr. Mayor, my recollection is that there is no proposal to do any major upgrade. It's been just a matter of maintaining the, the, the asset and doing some drainage works to try and minimise the work, the, the maintenance requirements on it and the flooding of it. But my, I, I will have that confirmed through the briefing report, but my recollection is there are no major, and I'm looking at Mr. Stevens as I'm saying this. My recollection is that there are no major upgrades or maintenance works programmed for Vishano Street.
And secondly, the, a second question I have is regarding the private jetty at two B Cambridge Road. An area of this jetty has been closed to the public for some time now, and, and in the briefing report, it refers to some, some degree of structural damage or failure. Given that the public have access to this via council's car park, because actually, obviously, or, or by the boardwalk, what is the current state of play in relation to the, the extent of the damage and to when this section of, of the wharf will be open to the public?
Free, Mr. Mayor, the, the jetty, as you indicate, is privately owned. It's owned by, I say, Federal Hotels, or the Vantage Group, one of the companies associated with Federal Hotels, if I can call it that. We have been in discussions with them some period of time, trying to get them to repair the section of jetty. I think, given the extent of damage, they're not necessarily keen to do that. We have no capacity to enforce them to repair the jetty other than to make safe. And the last advice I got is that it was certainly safe from a public safety, you know, from public access to it perspective, but not safe to use as a ferry terminal.
Does council have any overarching authority, particularly because it's within the public safety sort of movements, et cetera, to make sure that a structure, even though it's on private land but is accessible by council's footpaths and car park, do we have any overarching authority? Do we have any overarching authority to sort of talk to our state government authority or agency to follow up on this and make sure that work is done?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Again, as a private facility, I don't know that we have any capacity to do that other than ensure that it's safe from the public accessing it, but we'll ask the question of MAST, who will be the relevant authority or the Ports Corporation if there are one. But I think we'll pursue it with them, but I think the answer will be no.
Alderman James, Alderman Walker was next, I see.
Sure. Yes, through you, Mr Mayor, to the general manager. Page 29 discusses the winter programme for fitness in the park. Just trying to get my head around the budgeting aspects with this programme. For winter in the park 2017, would that be a matter discussed in the budgeting process of early 2017 or would that be something we've already pre-commuted to?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I understand the subtlety of the question and I'll have to... Certainly, I believe that the funds we committed in 2016, 17 would certainly take us into the commencement of the winter programme. Whether it's sufficient funds to undertake an entire winter programme, I'd need to check. But what I am conscious of, the council in approving that component of the budget this year did ask, did indicate that they wanted to review the ongoing funding for that programme at the expiration of this financial year. So I mean, I sort of half answered your question. I will pursue the balance of the winter programme and provide a response through the briefing report.
That'd be great. And with all the amount of spare time that you have, is there any ability to look at what other programmes fit into that, if you like, that we are almost pre-funding ahead of the budget cycle? That would be quite illuminating too.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I use the royal, I will there. But yeah, I understand, I think, the question. I don't think there's anything that we're pre-funding. I think it's more, what I want to be sure is that we're not creating more a community expectation beyond the period as distinct from committing the funding beyond that period.
Alderman Chong?
Very, very small things through you, Mr Mayor. We did change the name of the Harrow Recreation Centre to the Harrow Community Centre. It's twice the same as the Rec Centre. Been asked to be changed.
But we'll endeavour to do that. Thank you.
The other discussion in regard or questions concerning the quarterly report, that case, I'd put the motion that it be received, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.7.2 is the Warranay Mornington Neighbourhood Centre, lease of council land for a community garden. Alderman Campbell, second Alderman Chong. Speakers? Motion ends, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.7.3 partnership grants, there's two there being proposed, Crime Stoppers and Southern Support School. Alderman James, thank you, second Alderman McFarlane. Speakers?
This was a fair bit of discussion in the grants panel about how to award the grants. I think the explanation's fairly straightforward about how that decision was arrived at and what the considerations were behind the two grants that we didn't expect being successful. And of course, given the amount those projects entailed, there was a small surplus left over which we thought, given the size of the other unsuccessful projects, it would make more sense to carry that over to the next grant round rather than allocate it to, partially to one of those projects. I think that it was a fairly good outcome, given the discussion, and I look forward to those projects proceed.
11.7.4 concerns southeast council feasibility study. To receive the report and invite the general manager to get quotes for a independent review. Actually moved. Okay, Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I am aware that there was some discussion some time back that councils still had an option to go and seek an independent review. People have decided to do that and take that course of action. It just seems to me that we hear of setting up a committee to review a committee's findings and that sets in train some time-consuming endeavours to hopefully come up or endorse the findings of a committee which has made a committee's recommendations. And so it's a very novel way, I think, where to delay a process, then it's very handy. I'm not having a shot at Ruth Forrest here at all. I think she's... But anyway, the fact of the matter is there is a delay mechanism that the State Parliament has in place by setting up a committee to investigate the findings of another committee or of the lower house proceedings. And so in this case, we are seeking pricing for a potential independent review of the feasibility study to see if in fact those assumptions that they made, presumably it's the assumptions they made and the findings that they came up with are endorsed or otherwise. And this is the question as to whether that particular independent review can basically say that those deliberations and findings of the feasibility study are worthless, but there's no substance to them whatsoever. Alternatively, it could be seen as a way to hold back or defer any decision on this particular matter, given the amount of time that's been spent and the number of councils in the southeast district area have been involved in. And so the question arises as to, is Clarence going alone on this? Are the other councils who are in partnership with us, which are parcel of that feasibility study, and that's Tasman, Sorrel, De Morgan, Spring Bay and of course Clarence, are they going to initiate a independent or seek from their general manager a pricing for a potential independent review of that feasibility study? And basically hold back those, any further decision or process that they may have embarked upon. So I can throw a question to the mayor and say, Mr Mayor, is there a similar process that Clarence is reportedly embarking upon to request the general managers? And there's one general manager of Tasman and Sorrel and one general manager of De Morgan, Spring Bay. Are they, those councils, embarking upon a seeking pricing for a potential independent review of the feasibility study? So I could ask you that question so that I can at least know if they're going to go ahead and do something that we are proposing here in this particular motion.
I'm not aware that they intend to, Alderman James.
Thank you. So this raises the question as to why is Clarence doing this and why is Sorrel, Tasman and De Morgan, Spring Bay not? I think the decision that's been made, and I'll ask you to correct me if I'm wrong, Mr Mayor, is that they're going to go to the people or a plebiscite is being proposed?
No, they haven't made a decision yet. I understand their councils will consider that over the next few weeks independently, of course.
So it would appear that De Morgan, Tasman, Sorrel are not embarking upon a, or seeking their general managers to seek pricing for a potential independent review of the feasibility study and Clarence is. So look, I just don't know why we need to do this. It's going to be a costly exercise and I think we should save our money.
Other speakers?
Alderman James? Going back to the debate we were having previously about Clarence Street, we were saying, well, we're not deciding on bicycle lanes, it's only a consultation. This is only a, you know, seeking quotes. We haven't made the decision at this stage to go ahead with the said review, but we may do so down the track, having received the quotes. Why would we do it? Well, the simple explanation is that this is, and I know Alderman Walker's pointed this out a number of times, this is possibly the most important decision that any of us around the table will make in our careers as Aldermen. And it's something that we need to make absolutely sure that we get right. Now, we only just recently received the appendices to the southeastern study and I do have a number of questions myself about the methodology, about the way the conclusions arrived at. But I don't feel that I have the expertise to be able to look at the report myself and answer those questions. So it's perfectly legitimate for a report that is going to inform one of the most important decisions that we will ever make, that we make sure that we know that the methodology is sound, the conclusions are right, or if they're not, that we can reveal that they aren't. And let's not forget that we were hamstrung in terms of the potential consultants that we could choose from when it came to going ahead with this study. It would have been much better if we'd been able to select our own consultant, you know, based on our criteria. Let's also remember that one of the principles that we established when we went through the workshop with, I believe it was Mr Mero, when we're looking at establishing the principles on which we embarked on this process, one of those principles was that we reserve the right to have an independent analysis of any reports that were presented.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I absolutely concur. This will be one of, if not the, most important decision we make. And for me, it needs to come down to the post office test. When I go and get my post, which, you know, to go down to the post office and people stop me and ask me questions, I want to be able to say with absolute confidence that the information that's being given to them about this potential amalgamation, that I'm comfortable with it, that I believe it's right, that there will be savings if that's what we come up with or there will be other benefits. I think having the ability to do that independent review will give, hopefully me, hopefully everybody, that comfort that the information that we're going, presumably to go public with at some point, is correct.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A couple of questions before we get the show on the road. Did any other council reserve the right to an independent analysis?
Not that I'm aware of.
Did any other council take the time to conduct a facilitated workshop to, before they embarked on this process?
Hence that we had Mr Mero.
Not in the southeast study.
No, so perhaps the gravity with which some of our neighbouring colleagues are taking to this is a little different to ours and that's their business. I got elected with using my, was it 160 characters or whatever it was, it wasn't a whole lot of letters that we put in our things, that I would be putting the interests of Clarence residents and rate payers first. And if there's a big honking monetary reward, that may outweigh anything else and that may be the reason to go ahead. The KPMG consultants have told us repeatedly that they've baked in conservative assumptions with lots of upside, with hearing around properties, asset sales and so forth, around the value of scale. So if all these baked-in conservative assumptions that they're telling us are correct, an independent review should be able to verify for that process, should be able to provide a level of comfort. However, assumptions for me are like the one that the integration costs are just $2.6 million excluding redundancies and that's everything. I'd like some comfort around the rigor and the process and the knowledge of that. That said, I'm not committing us right now to undertaking that study and neither is this recommendation. But we, my friends, my learned Aldermen around the table, indeed, we have time on our hands because I can tell you, in the next couple of weeks, I will be quite surprised, use couple literally, if we get a report in the next fortnight completed from across the other side, Mr Mayor, that would be a surprise to me. But I suspect in that time, we can have our general manager start doing the legwork and get the understanding of what it would cost if we wanted to review it. We've reserved the rights, we're not enacting it. This is a, the only thing this cost is going to cost us is a little bit of the general manager's time and some stationary, perhaps a phone call. To not embark on that would be, in my opinion, incredibly reckless and incredibly foolhardly considering the gravity of this matter and considering what we've seen with other situations elsewhere around the country. And I commend the way that we've gone about this. We haven't stuck to unenjured, you know, like prejudices or ingrained ideas. We've been open and that's how we ended up being in a southeast and southwest because we took a without prejudice approach and that was the right thing to do. And to continue on in that spirit, I think you would seek some quotes to understand how we go forward. Six of four.
Alderman Farley?
I am looking at this motion and I'm taking it very literally and that means that all I am voting on is to supposedly seek some quotes. I don't want any other assumptions to go beyond that. But I want to actually probably take to task some of the comments that I've just heard, such as it's no cost to seek, it's just a couple of phone calls, it's just a couple of... If people around the table don't realise that time is money, then, you know, we're in trouble because I do value officers' time that it's taken to actually assess these quotes that'll come in and the time taken to do that. So I put a value on that. I also note the comment that we are here to make decisions and I do support those decisions. I don't know how much information we need that is actually going to support us making a clarified decision or is the extra information only going to confuse the issue? I'm not sure. Because you can go on and on and on seeking clarification of the data before you and the way it's been composed, but you're intelligent people and you need to know the basis on which that information is provided to you. And you can make assumptions of your own based on those conservative assumptions. So they're my concern in the fact that we do have another feasibility study that's coming through. Is there going to be a suggestion that we do the same thing with that one to make sure that they're both, those studies are on equal footing, there is more expense involved with that as well? So it goes on and on. We have to put faith in a system that actually has awarded this feasibility study to a very reputable firm. I wouldn't like to see any of that undivided by any doubting on behalf of council.
It's kind of difficult to believe what I just heard because really, I've gone through this report and at the moment, we're only seeing a pricing for a potential independent review. That's fine, that's fine. But like Alderman Walker, I was elected for Clarence. But I remind you, page 48, which really worries me, which really worries me of the report. Local government reform in South Australia only realised 12%, 12% of a savings estimated and in Victoria, 8.9%. And you're saying, oh, no, don't worry about it, don't worry about it. I think we're taking a very, very sensible approach. I've just... I'm just, I'm just looking down there. We're just taking a very, very serious approach at something, and I think this council should be commended, but I think everybody's read this report, everybody when they came here KPMG had questions to ask because there were certain things we did not like. This is another step forward. Like Paula Chong said, when she goes to the post office, people ask her questions, she wants to say with confidence, this is what I believe. Now, not to go down this track really does, does back for me, I think this is, well, where we've got to go, I'm like the others, I'm looking for the Hobart Glenorky, Keats Derry Port as well, Kangaroo Report, and we might have to go down the same track again. I could do, I could do.
Other speakers?
Put the motion then, which is the officer's recommendation, all those in favour, against Gary.
Didn't want to receive the report.
Item 12, order, question time, Alderman's question time, item 12.1, there's questions I noticed from Alderman Dous, which, uh, this has been the agenda.
Three, Mr. Mayor, I have, rather than read them all out, I have circulated, uh, a written response to the questions of Alderman Dous and that will be recorded in the minutes or so.
Are you comfortable with that, Alderman Dous?
Yeah.
Thank you. There are no, uh, items on 12.2 or 12.3, item 12.4, questions without notice, uh, start with you, Alderman Van Buren, if I may. Alderman Dous, Alderman here.
And, Mr. Mayor, a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, the, going back to the, um, query around, um, 67 Malana Road and the tribunal's decision there, I, I just wanted to, um, through you, Mr. Mayor, perhaps to Mr. Lovell, ask, um, whether that sets any sort of precedence or gives us any knowledge in terms of how the tribunal may interpret future decisions of the council, you know, what, what sort of bearing does it have on the way, by the way, interprets the case?
Yeah. You've got one on your desk, too.
Uh, this is actually a, uh...
The tribunal, um, the tribunal, uh, considered the loss of stabilisation to the existing castle in the south side. By comparison...
As a follow-up, is there a possibility of a challenge to the Supreme Court on that dispute?
The other question I had is, uh, I'm looking at a, um, ABC News report, uh, in which you were quoted as, um, saying that we need to, um, look at getting federal smart cities and suburbs funding, um, perhaps a, a combined Hobart, Greater Hobart bid, um, to look at state-of-the-art traffic monitoring. And, uh, Mayor Johnson of Glenorky was, um, also suggesting a push for light rail and ferries through that funding. And I was just wondering, what, what's the current status of that funding programme and is there, um, any, going to be avenue for a, a Greater Hobart bid for that fund, for some of that funding? And will Alderman from Clarence be able to input into that process in any way?
That's a good question, as, well, first of all, no decision has been taken, there has been talk between the four metro councils, if I can put it that way, um, but it's only been conceptual at this stage. We've been trying to find out what's involved in the city's deal and the smart cities approach from the federal government, and Turnbull, uh, Prime Minister, when he's down here on Saturday, obviously had a few more words to say about it. We haven't even got to the point where I've got anything I can report back other than to say, yep, looks interesting what's happening in the federal arena in regard to these two policies, um, is there anything that we should be thinking about? There is another forum that you'd be aware of as well, and that's, uh, one convened by, uh, Minister Hidding in regard to traffic studies around Greater Hobart. Uh, the recent meeting of that, we, uh, we were, um, talking about perhaps there might be a project that we could, uh, consider in terms of smart traffic management, but I think it became apparent that, uh, Partner State Growth, they're already heading down that path on their own accord anyway. Interestingly, at that meeting, um, Mr. Craig Perkins, also known as Mayor Craig Perkins from Meander Valley, was there in his capacity as CEO of the RDA, and, uh, he was interested in looking for opportunities to scope out a project for Greater Hobart as well. So incredibly early days, um, I haven't got anything more I can say at this stage, but if any of you've got any ideas on where we might head in that path, then certainly be happy to throw it into the mix. I, I think in the fullness of time, it'd be worth us having a discussion and it might fall out of merger discussions, which might or might not work, about what we can start to do in terms of strategies for Greater Hobart, in terms of transport, regional planning and so on and so forth. But... That's a good question, very early days and certainly plenty of scope for him. Alderman Chong, Alderman Khan.
Just in relation to regional planning, I would suggest that we sort of have another look at the regional plan, strategy plan, which actually implements one of that kind of work.
Answer the question.
The question is, do we have the capacity with our strategic plan to create an action plan, so that we can have like a to-do list coming from the strategic plan, where we're looking at the different, um, objectives that we put forward, how are we going to promote, how are we going to change, can we have a to-do list?
Mr. Mayor, we effectively have a to-do list with the budget and annual plan that we produce each year, which contains the list of projects that we're going to pursue, um, theoretically, um, and hopefully, in reality, the annual plan and budget is, falls out of the strategic plan. Now, admittedly, this year, given the prepare, um, preparation of the new strategic plan, there's perhaps some linkage is missing, but in the context of our forward annual plan and forward budgets, one would hope that they directly fall out of the strategic plan.
Another question?
Second move to that, so is it able to be able to be separated out, like, so, for instance, using tracks and trails as an example, we have an overall action plan which gets looked at, which gets budgeted for, and then the decisions, you know, are made on what gets budgeted for, but initially there's an action plan which has all of it in there. So if we're looking at roads, or parks, or the needs for certain different areas, how can we see where the money's going? I know we do some, um, graphs, but I'd like to see it as a list.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm looking for...
Question there, I mean, this is opportunity, not an opportunity for saying what you like or whatever. I missed the question.
The question is, do we have the capacity to create a to-do list?
Well, the answer to that, I think, was from the general manager, and that is, it's in the form of the budget.
He's led it in with the budget.
Sorry, can I perhaps add to it, Mr. Mayor? And so the council from, on, on almost all of our asset classes or major facilities, such as has asset management plans, or reserve activity plans, or coastal activity plans, or bike, bike, bike plans, tracks and trails plan, et cetera, all of those are subsidiary documents to the strategic plan, and then the budget and annual plan should reflect those, those overall plans. So I, I think there are linkages, I don't think the strategic plan, given the, um, there I used, um, strategic nature and, and high level in which it's written lends itself directly to a to-do list, the to-do list out of the strategic plan is all the subsidiary lines that council adopts from time to time.
Alderman Dous?
I have two questions, and both of them very, very local questions, not, not hopefully too hard to answer, but both of which I've actually done an Alderman's request, I'm just actually following up. Um, the Lordedale toilet at the canal, I constantly hear it's the most disgusting piece of toiletry that we have.
Another question?
The question is that there has been some delays because we need approving the budget, a new toilet for that facility. I understand that Crown Land has delayed it for some reason, I want to know whether those delays have been allayed, but planning was holding it up as well, so I want to know if there is a freeway now, because it's, it's getting really crucial for councils.
So you'd be interested in knowing the timeframe for the Lordedale?
If it's any closer to actually being, uh, put into reality.
Mr. Stevens?
I am the Attorney General.
Lordedale, yeah, toilet at the canal. No, no, that's another issue, that could be my quest second question.
The three toilets are being put out to, um, in our district, um, in Longchamp, it's six square, and has a job done, so they're considering three toilets.
Say all three at once, which of those three?
Washington Beach, Lordedale, Kamau, and...
Was that actually decided at the time? I mean, are those other two projects holding this one up? Because this one is fairly important, is not? No. Okay. Um, second question, which I did do as an Alderman's request, but I haven't had an answer yet, um, it's quite some time ago, um, there's a pathway from the South Arm RSL, and I had a request from the locals, a lot of people walk home in the RSL, and that particular pathway is not lit. And so, um, in order to create a safer environment for patrons of the Lord of the South Arm RSL and, and the occupants of South Arm, I asked whether there could be some lighting put on there, some existing poles there. The answer I got was that it's actually not our poles, that it would be a decision of state growth. Are we any closer to giving me an answer? Because the next, I was told that they would be approached to see what, whether they would cost...
Mr. Mayor, I'll follow up with Stoker.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. First question through you to Mr. Stevens is relating to what has some corners been considered the new swimming pool or skate park at Simmons Park? Um, my understanding is it's a, if you like, a, a tool to sort of catch storm water and provide a level of filtration before it gets through to Kangaroo Bay. Um, I don't know whether it's got a, does it have a nicer name, like, is it called a rain garden? And also, when it's dry, is it going to, is it going to appear concrete or is it going to appear more like a, a water feature?
Which is full of plants, fragmented, it's tight one, which will take account and check out the major, the second basin is the, um, what do you call it?
I just add to that, Mr. Mayor, just some further information that i- in the actual, what's the concrete bowl at the moment, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a herring bone or spine of, of catchment drains that are going to go in the bottom, that will, the water will, and then there will be various layers of, uh, of filtration material built up to ground level and plantings on top of it, the water will filtrate through it, I think you've noticed there's a big square catch drain in the middle, and the water will filter through that into that catch drain and out into the river, correct? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the elegant description. Um, second question, and follows on from Alderman, his questions to you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, given the context of city deals and also the discussions with Minister Hidding around transportation around the city, um, are you aware, or are you in favour of any system that you consider better that bus rapid transport as far, or rapid transit as far as a project goes? Basically, if you like, the above-ground, um, subway system, we're using rolling stock, the buses that can be used for other things as well. A wonderful renewal thing that we're seeing in cities like Albuquerque, uh, in, in the main city of Columbia, uh, really the top-notch, uh, public sector infrastructure spend. So I'm just asking you again if you're aware of something that's better than that to be taken to those proceedings.
I'm not aware at this stage, and we haven't got that far. We genuinely haven't.
So you're in favour, that's good.
Alderman James?
Firstly, to Mr. Stevens, uh, a short while ago, Mr. Stevens, I asked you about the, uh, the carryover balance of incomplete capital works projects from 1516, there was a number of them. Now, are we back on track and how can we start working on the 1617 capital works projects? Please.
I'll answer that, Mr. Mayor, we're, they're running progressively. I mean, we're doing the 1516 projects, but we're also commencing the 1617 projects. I think in the back section of the quarterly report, it has, well, it does, in the back section of the quarterly report is a detailed analysis of where we're at with all of the projects, including the carried forward ones from 1516 and previous years.
I'm sure we get 1516 out of the way, since possible.
Next question, thanks.
The second question is, um, recently we received an invitation to visit China to discuss a Chinese sister city arrangement. Uh, given there is liaison work currently underway between the developer of Kangaroo Bay and the sister city sponsor, should we delay any decision to go to China until such time as the DA and all the conditions of the DA are ticked off and the matter resolved?
Um, we've indicated through informal channels that we couldn't countenance a visit until the DA is complete, the planning applications are over, um, and I'm in the process of drafting a letter to the mayor, I'll bid you out to advise accordingly. Thanks. Right, that, um, concludes the open session of council. If I could have permission, thank you, Alderman Fears, Senator Alderman Chong, to go into committee, all those in favour, against Gary unanimously, actually.
Next week?